Together, you have an agenda before you. Call to order. Is there any declaration of pecuniary interest? If one does arise, I would ask you to declare it at the time. And you have a consent agenda before you. Those are all the items in number four, A through D. Is there anything that needs to be pulled and discussed separately? Seeing none, then I will ask for... Did I miss Counselor Mill?
I'm just going to move the motion forward.
Thank you, moved.
Do I have to pull them out to ask questions?
If you want to ask questions on any of the items A through D under number four, it would have to be pulled out from the consent agenda.
Yep, absolutely.
Worship, I'd like to call A and D.
Items A and D will be added at the end of the agenda, okay? Thank you much. Okay, so Counselor Mill has moved. Adoption of the items B and C. Am I missing?
Counselor Body will second.
And Counselor Body seconds, thank you. Any...oh, well, we have no discussion. All those in favor? Are there any opposed? That's carried, thank you. Let me take a second to get myself organized here. Right. So next is...well, you say page thirty-five, but maybe C and D. We're dealing with item five A now. Yeah, that's at page thirty-five. So I'll ask for a motion to...we're dealing now with the insurance renewal. I'll seek a motion. Mover, Counselor Patterson, seconded by Counselor Desai.
Thank you. Yeah, this is the annual report on our insurance renewal.
That Christmas fund is building up as we...
So insurance is the transfer of risk from one entity to another, and the cost of purchasing that transfer of risk is our insurance premium that we... That is before you here today. We have contracted our insurance since 2009 with the Frank Cowan Company. But prior to that, we were in reciprocal programs, OMAX being one and Roma program before that. Those were like self-funded programs with all the municipalities, kind of like a co-op where if their premiums did not meet all the liabilities of the claim costs, then you would receive supplementary assessments. If there were surpluses for any of those claims years, then you would receive funding back. We've never received any funding back, but we have received supplementary assessments. This report is dealing with Frank Cowan's 2019 renewal, which is a positive renewal. It's...if you look at the...what our ending insurance premiums were with our additions that have taken place in 2018, we're looking at a 10 percent reduction in our premiums. So that is just with a good loss ratio that we've experienced. And my motion is reading that for 2020's municipal general insurance that we take our insurance needs to market. It's not that I'm staff or unhappy with Frank Cowan, actually very quite satisfied. But I think if you're looking for an opportunity where the county's claims to loss ratios are in a good position, now would be the time if you want to put it out to market. So that is my motion, and I'll try and take any...answer any questions if anyone has.
Are there any? Counselor Mackey?
Thanks, Governor, for the report. How many different companies are out there in the market that you might be able to compare with?
I haven't gone and checked, but I know that, you know, there's a handful that...Dude Response, JTL, BFL, ExaAon, those are three that come to my mind, Frank Cowan. So there's at least four that are out there that are doing business with municipalities.
Any other questions? All right, then I'll call the question. All those in favor? Are there any opposed? That's carried, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next is item B with the early ON, Community-Based Capital Project, Dundalk Arena and Community Center. Beating? Yeah, so, sorry, I'll ask for a mover. Counselor Burley, and seconded by Counselor Mill. You.
Good morning, Mr. Warden, County Council.
Good morning.
So I am here to speak to you today about a project in the town of Dundalk, and it is a collaborative project with Southgate. The Community-Based Capital Program is a Ministry of Education program, and they're providing money to us for...to renovate, to retrofit, and build additions on existing buildings in order to create new spaces for early-on initiatives and early-on our centers for families. Not the same as childcare centers, but similar programming so that families can receive supports and resources. We have presented a report here earlier with regard to this initiative, and today we're looking for approval to move ahead with an agreement that we're drafting. We have received approval for $302,500. And that includes $262,500 for capital plus $40,000 for unique site costs. Unique site costs are landscaping. We have also received approval that if we need to use some of those dollars to assist with some other unique opportunities at that site, we can. So there's been lots of work going on with staff at Southgate, and we appreciate that connection. We are looking forward to hoping to settle and move the existing Kids in Us Center into this much bigger space, more accessible, and it's a shared space, so lots of opportunity with that community, and we know that community is growing. So that's the reason to bring it forward today. Any questions?
Counselor Mill?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Thank you, Barb, for the report. Southgate is indeed very thrilled to be part of this project, and we're very appreciative of the work that the county staff has done to bring this forward, to bring it to fruition, and we are fully supportive of the initiative.
Very good. Further questions? Counselor Desai?
Thank you, Worship. My question is related to any additional costs of the project going over budget. Who would be responsible for over-budget costs?
Very highly.
[laughter] There should be a contribution to the Christmas fund there. Unacceptable, this is unparliamentary. Basically, who would be responsible for the budget of the project going over budget?
Through you, Mr. Warden. Thank you for the question. It is Southgate that would be responsible for those overruns. We've had those discussions, and we are putting some contingencies in place so that we're all aware of what they could be. There is some additional funding been applied for for an elevator through Enabling Accessible Ontario Fund, and it's hopeful that we'll receive some of those dollars as well. But we did pursue some approval that if that is not received in its full, can we use some of those additional costs for that...the unique site cost, and they have approved that.
Okay. Yes, Counselor Mill?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Contrary to my colleagues' concerns, we are not worried about overruns in Southgate.
[laughter] Perfect in every which way. Any further questions? Probably, I'll call the question then. All those in favor? Are there any opposed? That's carried. You're on to C, and you're still on deck.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Warden. So this one is with regard to...
All right, we need to put...I'll call for a motion to put the item on. Counselor Carlton, thank you. I'm getting there. And seconded by Counselor Kivney. Am I pronouncing it?
Kivney.
Kivney, thank you. You're on.
All right, thank you very much. So this particular is...this report is with regard to another capital-based project, and that is over here at Sidnum School. And we are looking for some approval to move ahead with some things that need to happen with some timelines. So I'll give you a bit of context. We know that there is a growing need for additional childcare services and education and support for caregivers here in Gray County. And we would really like to emphasize that there's a shortage of registered ECEs in our community and across the province. We've done some work with our providers, and there is a critical shortage. Our providers have availability, they have waitlists, and unfortunately, they...the waitlists grow because there aren't enough staff to be able to meet the need. So that's a challenge that we are hoping to augment through some of the opportunity that the capital-based project at Sidnum might allow for us. We are looking to move forward with some engagement with our partners at the college. We're also looking to move forward with some partners in community that already provide early-on services and childcare services. And the report does speak to the capacity that the registered ECE program is...has at this site. Our concern is that this is...this is an opportunity for us to take the funds that are available from the province, when they become available, and enhance local capacity. We feel that if we have an opportunity to educate students close to home, they'll stay here, and that's an issue for us. We also want to work towards an opportunity for unique childcare needs in this community. We know that there are opportunities for expansion of toddler care, infant care, overnight care, shift work care. There's a variety of shortages in our community for those kinds of care needs, and we are looking to ensure that we investigate what is available and what needs to be available. We do have an allocation of $257,500 through this capital project fund. Our challenge is that, at this point, we haven't received a fund, and we're asking for approval to move ahead with some preliminary needs because before March 1st, we have to have our project tendered. We don't have to have it approved at that point, but we have to have enough to move forward to be able to meet the timelines. It's a challenge right now because we're kind of operating in a vacuum without the dollars having been received. We are receiving information from the Ministry of Education, but no confirmation from the Ministry of Education, so we need for that information to be shared here on the floor.
You, Counselor Desai?
Thank you, Worship. My question is also relevant to the previous report. I just don't want my colleague, Counselor Mill, to feel targeted. With...so I understand that a certain amount of funding gets forfeited if we do not tender by March 1st, 2019. So again, my question is, through you, Worship, how do we cover that funding? Does the project fall apart, or what happens?
That's a very good question. Through you, Mr. Warden. We are investigating that as we speak, hopeful that the province will come back to us with some confirmation. We don't want to risk losing these dollars, but we also don't want to risk putting County Council at risk, and so we are working towards finding a solution to that.
And I would just add, for those of you who are around the table who are newer, certainly that Sidnum School was a community hub project funded by the province, so they have been engaged and involved in the development of this facility from the very beginning. The childcare aspect of it was discussed with that. I'm hopeful that with your support to move forward, this will be another way for us to provide that information to the Ministry of Education, and we have a council resolution in support of moving forward. We're reluctant to incur any costs on this until you can assure us that we will see those funds. Similar to the Dundalk project, we would anticipate, and it's noted in the report, to having received 66 percent of the available funding. That was the terms under which, as long as we had closed on the purchase of Sidnum, that those funds would be forthcoming. The design aspect of this cost money. We need to get going with that right away, and so we need that assurance. So I think what we will be doing is forwarding your resolution on...from this meeting today and see if we can't get a response back from them.
Thank you. And through you, Mr. Warden, and to Barb, thank you very much for your presentation. Just a thought, you referenced that you're having difficulty finding ECEs, and I'm wondering, through the latest report, the year-end report from the Four County Labor Market Board, there was a mention there, and we recognize certainly that this area has a very low unemployment rate, but one of the highest age groups with unemployment is the 55 to 64 age group, and I'm wondering if there's an opportunity to reach out to Four County and to see through them if there's a way of building awareness in that age group that those folks might be interested perhaps in getting involved in some childcare.
Through you, Ms. Warden. Thank you for that comment, and we do work closely with Gemma and her committee, and I will definitely take that information forward and see if there's a strategy that we can work through. Thank you.
Further questions? Counselor Bartnicki?
Through you, Mr. Ward...Mr. Warden. I would like to know a little bit more about the partnership with Georgian College to educate the ECEs and what agreement has actually been made with them.
Through you, Mr. Warden. We are currently still in discussion. We've had a site tour. We certainly have had engagement with the staff that are providing the programming, and some of the challenges for space at the actual campus is part of the problem, I think. My interpretation would be that when they are continuously looking for space for multiple programs, it's not just the ECEs, but they're...the campus itself is very tight. It's good news because it means there's a lot of college students attending this campus, but what we think could happen is if we were to provide space, shared space, that there could be an opportunity to expand the number of people attending. They do have...I've put some statistics in here about who is graduating this year. The challenge for us is that this is a provincial problem. We seem to have the same issue in our PSW programs that we do in our ECEs. It's like the opposite demographic of the people that are served. And so the ministry is working on some strategies on branding as well, recognizing that this is a very important job. This should not be a minimum wage job. This should be something...it's a struggle to think that we would encourage our students to go through two years of college to get their diploma and then work at minimum wage. That needs changed. And there are some strategies through the ministry to enhance wages of people who are working, and so we work with the operators on flowing funds. We're the service system manager, so we receive the dollars from the ministry. We're hoping for more news. Right now, it's pretty quiet on that front, what that might look like, but we are definitely advocating. And there is...there's work being done at different tables from both our level as a service system manager, as well as the colleges and the folks that are belonging to associations. So the quality of care has risen over the years, legitimizing it through being registered, but we are also facing the fact that there just aren't as many folks going into that sector. So we think if we can work on a local solution, that that might benefit us and keep people here instead of sending our kids somewhere else to go to school, and then they don't come back.
Ms. Wingrove?
If I can add as well, myself, Economic Development Department, have been in ongoing discussions with both the dean of this campus as well as the president of Georgian College. The business plan that was brought to this table earlier spoke to a lease agreement with Georgian College for space, and we anticipate bringing an update report to council hopefully in January that speaks to where those negotiations have come to and updating that business plan. The college does intend, as of this week, to lease classroom space for the ECE program within the Sidnum campus, and so that will be the relationship between us and them. Their students will have the opportunity, it's anticipated, to enhance their program experience by being able to do monitoring and discussion based on the activity happening in the childcare and early-on rooms.
Counselor Bartnicki?
Follow-up, Mr. Warden. The town of Blue Mountains has reached an agreement with Georgian College, Collingwood, to bring in foreign students. We have 33 of them here now in the tourism program, and they were all employed, by the way, within one week in Blue Mountains. They are going to expand to 130 students next year. I realize the shortage in ECEs, it's been around for a number of years, and we also have just received notice from the province about the new bill, which has further cuts to education budgets. There is mention of early childcare in that bill, and increases to home daycare situations, which might alleviate a bit, but I would recommend that you also bring to the attention of Georgian College the opportunity perhaps to copy that model that seems to be working in the first four months in Collingwood and Blue Mountains so well.
Thank you for that information. We'll definitely make note of that and ask questions and investigate. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any further questions? Seeing none, I will call the question. All those in favor? Are there any opposed? That's carried. Thank you, Barb.
Thank you very much.
Next, item D, the fun stuff. Turn it over to Heather Morrison. Sorry? Oh, sorry, yes, we do have to have a mover, sorry. Could I get a mover? Counselor Mackey, seconded by Counselor Woodcroft? Woodbury? I'm working on things here, my apologies. My apologies.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. This report outlines the agency board and committee selections for 2019. With it being the first meeting of a new council, there's been some growing pains with technology and emails not quite being received by all members before the agenda was prepared. As well, once the agenda was prepared, and due to the number of possible elections on several committees, we've also received a request to change selections in, hopefully to avoid or lessen an election. So for full disclosure, these are what I have received since the agenda was published. Counselor Robinson has requested long-term care and an alternate to the Gray County Federation of Agriculture. Counselor Desai has requested to be removed from the Economic Development and moved to the CAO Evaluation Committee. And Counselor Hutchinson has requested to be changed from the Long-Term Care Committee of Management to Economic Development. You'll note in the report that there are also some vacancies that we will look to be filled, one for the stewardship Gray Bruce, one for the Blue Mountains Task Force, one for the Community Alcohol and Drug Strategy Committee, and one for the CAO Objectives and Evaluation Committee. With the committees that require an election, and there are four this year, each counselor will be permitted one minute to speak to their wish to sit on the council or to the committee. We'll go in alphabetical order, and once all the candidates have spoken, an election will occur by show of hands. Depending on the number of positions available, each counselor will be able to vote up to that limit. So if there are two positions, you'll be able to vote up to two times. Four positions, four times, et cetera. Before proceeding to the elections, are there any other counselors who wish to make changes to their selections at this time? Counselor Columbus?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Warden. I think I have chosen to put my name on the CAO objectives and evaluation for consideration of that, which is a serious question. I consider that.
So I did. Hearing you, Counselor Columbus.
Sorry. I had indicated that I would also be interested if the...if the opportunity was appropriate to put my name on the CAO Objectives and Evaluation Committee.
So through you, Mr. Warden, there were a few that provided me with three choices, and I have put only the first two on here with the exception of Counselor Burley, who had accessibility as his third choice and was the only counselor that was interested at that point in time in that committee. The other choice, number threes, have been removed from the chart at this point in time, and we'll move forward.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else? Counselor Columbus?
No, that's fine.
Okay. So just if you could review once again for this guy, it's a little bit slow, if you could slowly go through those changes again.
Yes, for sure. Counselor Robinson has requested long-term care and the alternate position.
One sec.
Yes.
One at a time.
Sorry.
Robinson. Thank you. Next.
And the alternate to the Gray County Federation of Agriculture.
Okay. Got that.
Counselor Desai has requested to be removed from the Economic Development and moved to the CAO Evaluation Committee.
And move to?
CAO Evaluation Committee.
Thank you.
And Counselor Hutchinson, move from long-term care to economic development.
Sorry, bear with me. I'm still trying to find Counselor...CAO Evaluation.
It's at...it would be at the bottom of the chart. I think it's the last one there.
Oh, okay.
Those are all I've received.
Got that.
Robinson's added. Robinson's in alternate. [inaudible]. Okay, she's gone from there, and Hutchinson is added.
Thank you. Has everybody got that? Took me a while. Good? Okay.
Okay, no other changes? Okay. So we'll start with Economic Development. We have six counselors for two positions, and in alphabetical order, we'll start with Counselor Bartnicki. 60 seconds as to why you would like to stand for this committee.
Through you, Mr. Warden. I think that economic development for the town of...the county of Gray is really important. It's interdependent with social sustainability, with economic sustainability, with environmental sustainability. I think that we do have some great staff here at the county working on it. There's been some great advances over the last few years, but I think we can do a lot more with it for all areas. I think that we need to diversify the focus. It cannot be too heavily on any one area. It does need to include agriculture more than it currently does, and I'm hoping to work with the great staff and other members of this council to make that happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Body?
Thank you. For the past eight years in the city of On Sound, I've been involved in economic development, and as we've sat around the last four years, we've watched economic development grow so much in importance at Gray County, which is now really the lead in the area on economic development, not the lower tiers. Given my experience, I would like to sit on the Gray County Committee to help bring some of my experience and knowledge to it. We've got a great opportunity over the next few years with Bruce Power Expanding. It is the largest infrastructure project in Canada, maybe in Canadian history. A lot of what they're doing is going on in Bruce County, but Bruce County can't possibly take on all the opportunities that are there. It's important for us to go after it, to enhance what we're doing agriculturally, what we're doing with tourism, what we're doing with everything, and I'd like to be a part of that to try and lead that charge. Thanks.
Thank you.
Counselor Carlton?
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Warden. Township of Georgian Bluffs doesn't have anybody directly involved as staff or working on economic development, and I think it's very important for us to work with the county. We already are working there through the airport and such, and I think there's a lot more that we can do through the township, and it would be nice to have some focus going in that direction, both for the county and for the township. Thank you.
Counselor Hutchinson?
Through you, Mr. Warden. Thank you. I feel I'm a strong candidate to serve on the Economic Development Committee for a variety of reasons. I have a vision to promote, sorry, open-for-business concept in all of Gray County. As economic development is one of the three ingredients or goals on our strategic plan, we need a dynamic committee to ensure that the next term will focus on entrepreneurship, job creation, newcomer attraction, and of course, retention of all of these. I have experience in strategic planning and understanding the complexities of companies being innovative and competing in today's fast-changing economies. I'm a successful business owner in our community. I have several years of experience doing commercial, and that is our...sorry, trading commerce globally. I've helped build some successful trucking companies over the years from the ground up, and several of these companies are leading in the industry today. I'm the current VP of our West Gray Chamber of Commerce, and I've also been recently appointed to the West Gray Economic Development Committee. Thank you.
Counselor Kivney?
Thank you. And through you, Mr. Warden, I would like to suggest that I be considered...
And through you, Mr. Warden, I would like to suggest that I be considered for the Economic Development Committee. And I'll speak to some of my experience. I have been the Chair of our Economic Advisory Committee in the municipality of Meaford for this past term. And some of our initiatives included new gateway signage, which I'm happy to say has just been installed. We had a branding committee where we were very successful in doing a wonderful marketing video for the municipality that has been marketed successfully through the internet. We had a first impressions committee as well. And we were involved with the Renew Initiative. All of these networking groups involved recruiting volunteers, and I think that's one of my strengths. I'm also a co-chair of the Four County Labor Market Board, where we've been involved in SIO projects. And recently, in the employee survey, we recognized that retention is one of the areas that needs focused. And I think that will be probably discussed in the Economic Development Committee. I'm also involved with Andrew Segward on the Workforce Task Force out of Blue Mountain. And we've heard Counselor Bartnicki speak to that. And I would certainly be very happy to bring information from that group into the Economic Development Committee. And I'm also a past president of the Chamber of Commerce in Meaford and a business owner locally. So, thank you.
And Counselor Woodbury?
Thank you. I feel fairly strongly about going to the Economic Development Committee and planning advisory. Through the whole county, we have different things growing, different needs. And I think what we need is, is the combination of mainly rural areas plus the industrial areas and the tourist areas to look at the whole picture. Fresh ideas, what's needed, and connections. And we're lucky from Southgate, we have people from Markham and Toronto that are coming up wanting to help bring things to Gray County. And I think I could put our committee together with some of the other connections that way that could help us out.
Thank you. So you've heard from six councillors interested in the Economic Development and Planning Advisory Committee. Two appointments are necessary. We will go by show of hands. I'll look to the warden and the CIO to help me count. Again, we'll start in alphabetical order. You may vote for up to two.
We have a question. Counselor Mackey?
Mr. Warden, through you, Madam Clerk. Is there any way to expand the numbers on any of these committees? We've had a number of very good, you know, acknowledgements here from members of county councils. What is the process if county council wanted to expand the membership?
Good question.
So, right now, the terms of reference indicate how many councillors will be sitting on each committee. But because of the interest in a number of committees, there is opportunity for these committees to review their terms of reference early on in the term. And if they choose to open those numbers up, because of the interest and the, the experience that we have around the table, that's certainly something that would be encouraged at the committee level early on in their, in this term.
Go ahead. Counselor McQueen?
Counselor McQueen. I think it was towards to you, Heather. If we're going to show of, I feel a little uncomfortable showing hands, only from the fact is that we got to pick two of the six. They're all good candidates. But it really puts it down to us having to put one against the other. And I'm feeling really uncomfortable by putting my hand up against one against the other. Like, we used to do a, let me call it a...
Secret ballot?
Secret ballot.
Secret ballot. I just feel like it's very unfair for us to try to put ourselves one against the other and try to pick two out of the six. I feel very uncomfortable doing that. I put them all up and put them all on there, as Counselor Mackey's saying. I just, I just feel it's very uncomfortable. Oh, well. Really puts us in a, you know. So I would like to see a secret ballot, if we're going to vote on it or support them all being on there, one the other.
I'll allow our clerk to respond.
So, under the municipal act, secret ballot is only to determine the head of council. We are not permitted to have a secret ballot for any other election. So.
Counselor Mackey?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. So, Madam Clerk, just to return to my previous question, there's no opportunity for this council today to make a decision on increasing the size? I mean, does it not fall back on council and not the, the committee itself?
It, council certainly has the ultimate decision-making responsibility here. The terms of reference have all been updated recently by those committees and brought to the previous council for endorsement and have been endorsed. I guess we could, we, it's up to council.
We'd have to do, Swin Grove?
Yeah. No, I was just going to say that I think a strong Economic Development Advisory Committee is really important. And, and the fact that there's so many of you with so much experience and are so interested and supportive of, of, you know, being a part of that work, we welcome that. So if there's a way for us to move forward from a proper process perspective, I'd like to see us be able to do that if we could.
If I may, we could have an amendment to the resolution that would amend the number of members on the Economic Development and Planning Advisory Committee from two to what the, what council chooses.
Does that, I hope I can ask a question. Well, does that require, does that require a motion today or a notice of motion?
No, we could do, because we're speaking about appointments now, it could be an amendment to that because it is germane to the motion that's on the floor right now.
Very good. Counselor McQueen?
I shall move an amendment to the terms of reference to allow six plus the warden to be named to the Economic Development Committee.
Well, I'll call for a second, and then we can have some discussion. Counselor Robinson? Discussion?
Well, I feel that the names that are, of the people that put their name forward gives a good cross-section of the county. And I think that's very important for economic development because we do have a big county that is represented here around the table. And I think it, bringing all those expertise, as the CIO has mentioned, I think that's nothing but a positive, a positive outcome that could come from that committee. Thank you.
One sec, Counselor Soever?
Yes, you know, I, I think these are all great people. And it is a good representation of the county. But perhaps we should consider that if they don't all show up, there may be a quorum issue. I know we had this discussion in town of Blue Mountains about increasing the size of committees. But then the quorum also goes up.
So I can speak to the quorum issue quickly. That this committee also has representatives from the public. And we would, we try our very best to make sure that when we book a meeting, that we will definitely have quorum.
Thank you.
And I would, your point is well taken. Economic Development Advisory Committee meets at 7:30 in the morning. So, so for some of you, it will be a best efforts thing, unless we decide to change the time that, that the meetings start.
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
I didn't mind it. I'd quite like to.
Well, I certainly support this, this motion before council. There are so many new individuals that are before us, Mr. Warden. And it's really a fresh start and a very modern and innovative group of county councillors that have put their name forward. So I would absolutely support one, one and all for, for this committee.
Who was the second?
To Mackie.
That was.
It's a Mackie.
I don't know.
I didn't know I had been.
Did you have a comment, Counselor Mackie?
Well, I mean, I certainly agree with all my colleagues' comments. I think, you know, Kim certainly alluded to it, that economic development is essential for, you know, our county going forward. So having more ideas, at least for the first year. I mean, I think if we select a larger number, that committee then can come back to council a year from now and tell us if it should be revised. Thank you.
I see no further discussion, so I'll call the question. All those in favor? Are there any opposed? That's carried.
So we won't do an election for economic development. Thank you.
Congratulations to all.
And we'll get to the main motion when we're done with all of the elections. I know.
It's got her hopping.
That's right. So now we have Tourism Advisory Committee. And we have three members. Counselor Boddy, Counselor Carlton, and Counselor Kivany. Mr. Warden?
Bobby?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Given that I just went on to the Economic Development, I'd like to remove my name from tourism.
Okay. It is, yeah?
There'll be no election for tourism then. It's getting better and better.
Moving right along.
All right. Board of Health. This is one that we are legislated to have county councillors on under the act that they, they fall under. So we have four councillors interested in three positions. Counselor Columbus, Counselor Millen, Counselor O'Leary, and Counselor Patterson. Are there any changes to that before we get into speaking? Just making sure before we move forward. No? All right, I'll start with Counselor Columbus.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. And I really have no experience in the healthcare field per se, isn't it from the personal perspective? But as the mayor of the municipality of Meaford, I was very instrumental in reversing a decision to close the operating room in our hospital. And that now is fully integrated into GBHS elective surgery program through the Owensound site. So that was certainly a, a very predominant exercise going forward. Health and wellness is very, very important to all of us at the local level as well as at the, at the Gray County level. And I'm very interested in this in particular. I've also been instrumental in leading a new program coming on-site at the Meaford Hospital with a PTSD program clinic to help and support those who are suffering in our community from post-traumatic stress disorder and occupational stress injury programs. I want to bring this to the county level. I think it's a very, very important program that we also have support through our EMS program as well. My particular focus is right now on primary care access. Many of our local rural communities have difficulty attracting physicians in our area. And I think that I can offer some thoughts and insight in moving alternatives to that situation along. So I would respectfully ask for your vote to sit on Board of Health.
Thank you. Counselor Millen?
Thank you, Heather. It has been my good fortune to sit on the Health Board in the past. And I fairly strongly believe that the, the health of our communities is literally our community health. And the Board of Health, through their outreach to the community in education and outreach to bring good practices in terms of nutrition and lifestyle and accessibility, those kinds of things, I think are very important to our community. The Health Board does a tremendous job doing that. They have great staff over there. And again, it's been my experience that it's been a very interesting endeavor to be on that board. And I would, I would seek your support to, to re-establish myself over there. Thank you.
Counselor O'Leary?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Just in my four years in council, we've had many issues come through on, on our council with public health, including mental health and fluoride. We've also partnered with the Health Unit on grant applications toward the development of recreation assets. On a more personal note, I've sat on the police board for the last four years and have seen what mental health has done to our police costs. So sitting on the Board of Health would allow me to expand my knowledge in something I've developed a passion for. And I'd appreciate your support. Thanks.
Counselor Patterson?
Warden Hicks, county councillors, I would like to continue serving on the Board of Health. I believe good health enhances your quality of life. And I want to help improve the overall health and well-being of all residents in Gray and Bruce Counties. I believe for boards and committees to function efficiently, there needs to be some consistency. If I was appointed to the Board of Health, I offer that consistency with my past experience as a board member. I would appreciate your support to be on the Board of Health. Thank you.
So this one requires three. Mr. Warden?
Counselor McQueen?
Just a question of clarity. You said it's legislated as of the number. Is there an opportunity to have an alternate? If one person can't make it, or there's no option for that? Okay, thought I'd ask.
I was going to get to, we don't have any choice in the, in the numbers and the alternates there, so. All right, so we have... So you will be able to vote up to three times, okay? And I will, again, go in alphabetical order. Please hold your hands up so that I can see them, and the warden and the CIO, so we can quickly count them through. Counselor Columbus? Counselor, missed the warden. Counselor Millen? Counselor O'Leary? Counselor Patterson? Counselor Millen and Counselor Patterson, for sure. We have to vote again on Counselor Columbus and Counselor O'Leary. Okay, so I'll call again. Counselor Columbus? And Counselor O'Leary. Third one is Counselor O'Leary. Thank you. We'll now go to long-term care. As you will note, this one is also a popular committee. There are four positions for this committee. And there are seven councillors requesting to sit on this committee. Counselor Burley, Counselor Columbus, Counselor Desai, Counselor Mackie, Counselor Patterson, Counselor Robinson, and Counselor Woodbury. Are there any changes before we move forward? Seeing none, start with Counselor Burley.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. At a very young age, I have a vast experience when it comes to long-term care. I was chair of Social Services for a good number of years. I also was very fortunate to be one of members on the first long-term care committee. I was also chair during that time. I have a vast experience when it comes to long-term care. As my company, just for information only, we worked on every single building that Gray County owns. I've worked on many of the long-term care homes as a company. I'm very familiar with how they work, how they're built. I have a vast experience when it comes to quality and long-term care. And I would appreciate being put back on that committee so I can continue to move forward. Thanks.
Counselor Columbus?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Certainly, long-term care, I think, is something that is, as all the programs within Gray County are very, very important. It is, I've been on the Social Services Committee as part of our first term on county council. Certainly enjoyed the time and learned a lot about the special needs of that segment of our population. In addition to that, I'm working very, very closely with the long-term care facility at our local onsite in the municipality of Meaford to further my education on and the needs with long-term care. It is a very important decisions made with Gray County's management of long-term care. And I would really value being a part of those decision-making at the committee level.
Counselor Desai?
The previous generation that is now moving into these long-term cares built a beautiful, a free world for my generation. I see this as my generation's way of repaying the previous generation. I guess that fell flat. On a more serious note. Proud. On a more serious note, there are some, as Counselor Columbus mentioned, there are some important decisions coming through on the long-term care file. Issues that affect the municipality that I sit on this council from. And as such, I believe that I, as such, I feel I should be on that, on that committee. And which is why I have put forward my name for the committee. Thank you.
Counselor Mackie?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I certainly have an interest in long-term care. We've... Our last council had many discussions, and I didn't always agree with the majority vote. You know, looking after our vulnerable seniors is probably one of the most important jobs that this council is tasked with. So I would certainly welcome the opportunity to sit on the Long-Term Care Committee. Was fortunate enough to tend to... You know, I think we need to reach out to some of our neighbors and look at best practices. Was fortunate enough to attend a session that Simcoe County put on at AMO in regards to a campus situation that they have that involves, you know, life leases, long-term care, and also retirement home, all within, you know, one village-type setting. The interest there was that the long-term care is supplemented or subsidized by the retirement home and the life leases. So in Simcoe County, they pay a far less levy than what we do in Gray County and have more beds. So I think we can reach out to some of our neighbors and find out what's really working in other areas. Thank you.
Counselor Patterson?
Thank you. Warden Hicks, county counselors, I would like to continue sitting on this committee. I offer my experience and knowledge to help provide the best possible care to people living in long-term care in our Gray County homes, and to consider the needs of residents, the volunteers, the family members, the employees, and the communities. And I offer consistency with the opportunity to return to this committee and would appreciate your support. Thank you.
Counselor Robinson?
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and through you, Mr. Warden. I would appreciate your consideration to select me to serve on the Long-Term Care Committee of Management. I have been a strong voice in regards to long-term care and the need to plan for the future. I have a vested interest in both Rockwood Terrace and Gray Gables on behalf of our Gray County community residents. It is important that the residents of long-term care homes receive safe, consistent, high-quality, resident-centered care. I have an understanding of the challenges of managing and leading in the long-term care environment. I have experience in direction-setting and issue-management. I want the best for the Gray County residents, and I'd like to contribute to that success. Thank you.
Counselor Woodbury?
I guess I could just say what you guys said. I agree. But we'll go a little farther than that. I'm a big-picture person. I like to look at the whole things and look at how you can do things differently, how you can join things together. What Counselor Mackey was talking about of having more of a community idea, to me, that makes sense. And we should do more of that stuff, where if somebody's wife or husband is in a long-term care, they could be living basically on a campus right there, that they could see each other a lot and do things like that. I also believe that there's a lot of opportunities to tie in between being on the Economic Development Committee and long-term care. I don't think that they're exclusive. I think it's something that can go hand-in-hand. So while we look at the individuals and their needs, I think we have to keep that big picture in mind, and we have to be open-minded and look at other things. The other part that I bring to the table that could be a little different is I was a 33-year union person in my previous profession. I understand how unions work, how contracts work, how things like that. So I can add the tie-in for the rest of the committee on that type of an issue. Thank you.
So there are four positions available on this committee, seven requesting to sit on that committee. Again, you can vote for up to four people. Start with Counselor Burley. Counselor Columbus? Counselor Desai? Counselor Mackey? Counselor Patterson? Counselor Robinson? And Counselor Woodbury? Counselor Burley? Counselor Robinson? Counselor Mackey? Counselor Woodbury? Okay, that ends the elections. We do have some other positions on committees available. So I'm happy to take names for those committees. First one is the stewardship Gray-Bruce. This relates to forest management in Gray County, and you work a lot very closely with the Woodlot Associations and our conservation authorities within the county. Is there anyone that's willing to put their name forward for that? Yes.
Maybe you could speak to the time commitment on this. Do you know, or Randy, can you speak to it?
Quarterly, that's what I would say, too. It's quarterly. It's an outside committee, so it's not one that's operated by Gray County. And it is between Gray and Bruce, so there are going to be some Bruce County representatives on there as well. And I think the meetings are quarterly, and they operate between the two counties. Okay? Is there anyone willing to put their name forward for that? Counselor Gamble? Anyone else? Thank you. We have our Gray County Federation of Agricultural Bill with Counselor McQueen, alternate Counselor Robinson. We have one position available for the Community Alcohol and Drug Strategy. Counselor Mackey has indicated his interest. Is there anyone else who's interested in that? Counselor Desai? Anyone else? Thank you. Almost there. The Gray County Blue Mountains Task Force, three counselors plus the warden. Counselors McQueen and Bart Nicky have indicated their interest to sit on that committee. There's another position still available. Counselor Body? Counselor Soever? Can I ask if Blue Mountains has appointed their membership for this committee yet? Right, so we have two members, Counselor Body, Counselor Soever. Run through an election on that one, then. Counselor Body?
Just that I sat on it before, I'm surprised there'd be members from the Town of Blue Mountains sitting on it because you've got members from the Town of Blue Mountains on it from the other side. It's been a discussion and exchange of ideas that we've sat with staff and with other counselors. Then Counselor Hicks, Warden Hicks, sat on it. We met... I don't know how often, not that often.
No, I think four times over that.
Four times, maybe. It was just an opportunity to have a discussion between the county and Town of Blue over things like planning, water...
Infrastructure.
Infrastructure and things, and discuss other issues and exchange ideas. So I'd be happy to sit on it again.
Counselor Soever?
Well, yeah, I agree with actually Mr. Body's comments, but so I'll withdraw because I think it's good to have somebody other than... We would then have five, and you guys should have one, so.
It's an exchange.
Well, I know. So there wouldn't be much of an exchange of ideas. We'd certainly have our way.
All right, thank you. So Counselor Body will be our third. And we have one position available for the CAO Objectives and Evaluation Committee. Currently, we have Warden Hicks, Counselors Millen, Hutchinson, and Desai. Is there anyone else who's willing to put their name forward for that committee? Counselor Bart Nicky? Counselor Carlton?
Counselor Columbus?
Sorry, and Carlton. Anyone else? Just Counselors Carlton and Bart Nicky? Okay. All right, so we will have an election for that position. Counselor Bart Nicky, would you like to speak first?
Through you, Mr. Warden, I have a great deal of experience with recruiting, job performance, those kinds of areas, and would like to add that experience to members of council for one of our most important positions. Thank you.
Counselor Carlton? Okay. So Counselor Bart Nicky will fill that final spot. Thank you. We have our appointments for council members for the 2019 year. There will be staff reports coming forward in January for the public membership on economic development, tourism, and accessibility advisory. Those will be coming either on the January 10th or the 24th meeting. So now we'll just need a resolution to endorse all of these appointments.
Yes, and that's been moved and seconded already, I believe. It was in the main motion?
The current recommendation was, and then we've... So I think Kathy has had the current... There's a current recommendation that all of the other appointments be voted on, so we have that one. And then we have a chart that has filled in all of the appointments, which will be a separate resolution. So we'll bring the first one forward first, Kathy. The one at the very top. And so the one on the screen there speaks to Warden Hicks, being our Georgian College representative, speaks to the elections that we've done and the other appointments, as noted in the report provided to you. We've already voted on the amendment. And so the third resolution, once we get there, will be as amended, and we'll include all of that. Okay?
And so do we need to vote separately, or can... Is that...
We can vote. What have we got here? I think we need to vote on the original one first because it speaks to your Georgian College appointment as well, as well as endorsing the other appointments within the report.
Yes.
Okay, and that one has been moved and seconded.
That has been moved, okay. Counselor McQueen? If you could speak into your microphone, I'm not hearing you properly.
So in the previous year, there was an appointment to... And I can't remember the committee offhand, but it was from the Weston Group that with regards to working through representatives of agriculture with regards to changing or preserving water-sensitive lands with regards to funding. And I can't remember the name, but I know Counselor Barfoot sat on that. It was the warden before, and I forget the name of that.
Alice.
Alice. That's it. And so last term, Warden Halliday did not seek that spot, and Counselor Barfoot continued on that because he was on it as two years as warden. So I think there is Alice Committee. I know it's still going, so I guess that's something that maybe we could follow up even into the January meeting.
Yeah, I will. I'll follow up on that. I think it meets maybe once a year. I think that's what we've heard back from our wardens. And typically, it's been the warden that sits on that committee, but I will look into it further.
I know last year, there was a slight change on that. And it's funny from the Weston Group that they have that committee that they take sensitive lands of that.
I'll look into that further.
Okay, any other discussion? I'll call the question in. All those... Oh. All those in favor? Are there any opposed? That's carried. Thank you.
And then we have a second one that just endorses all of the committee appointments.
Okay. And so I'll call for a mover?
Counselor Desai, seconded by Counselor Millen. Any discussion? All those in favor? Very much. That's approved.
Five-minute break, Mr. Warden?
I think that's a good idea. Why don't we take five minutes?
Really coming through the county, not through the lower tier. So I guess at the end of the day, the unknown factor will continue to be unknown until we get through it, but I don't really see a difference in the financing between the upper and lower tier. Anyway, those are my thoughts.
Okay, any further discussion? If not, then I will call the question. All those... Oh, you have a question, or I'll call the question. All those in favor? Any opposed? That is carried. Thank you. We're going to turn next to item 5D, which is the master plan for the Gray County Cycling and Trails. So Desai, are you moving? Seconded by Counselor Bart Nicky. It's on the floor. Counselor Desai?
Thank you, Your Worship. Gray Highlands is also working on a trails master plan locally. My question through you, Your Worship, to staff is, to what extent will staff be working with lower-tier municipalities to... And if they will be working at all, to ensure sort of a continuous trail that goes throughout Gray County connecting individual communities?
Randy?
That's a great question. And we're aware that Gray Highlands is working on a master plan, which is fantastic. There have been other municipalities that have also looked at active transportation master plans and other things. So we want to make sure so that... We're in the early stages still of this project. We've hired a consultant to help us through this project. They're in the data gathering stage, so part of it will be to point them to existing or proposed transportation master plans, so they can incorporate that into some of their recommendations and findings that will eventually come out of this project. Local municipalities are a key group, consultation group with this project. Essentially, it's what you just mentioned in terms of creating an overall county-wide network, whether it's through our paved shoulders or through our trail network. That's the end goal of this project, is to develop that and recommend where there's maybe gaps in our current system, how we can fill some of those gaps in a plan going forward, that whether it's transportation services implementing it through paved shoulders on our county roads, or through connections through our trails, whether it be county trails or local municipal trails, how we can start forming some of these connections and making an overall improvement for our active transportation network throughout the county.
Any further discussion? I'll call the question. All those in favor? Are there any opposed? That's carried. Thank you very much. Returning now to item six, Other Business. A Good Roads. We have not received any nominations. Anyone interested in the Ontario Good Roads Association Board of Directors? Counselor Desai?
Your Worship, I just wanted to let my colleagues here know that yesterday at our council meeting, Gray Highlands did pass a resolution endorsing me as a nominee from Gray Highlands. I thought that would be appropriate, given I would be attending the conference as a delegate from Gray Highlands. And so I just wanted to let county folks know. Thank you.
Okay. Right, we'll make note of it. Thank you. Move on. Item 6B, delegation requests. Has anyone had a chance to put their heads around?
If I could, as staff, we did discuss whether or not we felt that there were delegation requests that we should be moving forward at OGRA. There's nothing really, from our perspective, that comes to mind that we haven't delegated on previously, six and 10, for example. So we didn't identify anything that we felt was really critical to bring forward to the minister's attention at this time. But certainly, if somebody does have something that you'd like us to bring forward, we'd be more than happy to do that.
Worship, I just have a quick question. If we do not make any delegation requests today, can we bring back... Can we bring this item back to the first meeting in January, too?
That line is the 14. Yes. Conference is near the end of February, is it not? Bart Nicky?
Through you, Mr. Warden. The Town of Blue Mountains, and particularly our east end, does have significant concern with a very large and very active group around Highway 26 expansion. And the putting off of the environmental assessments related to the widening of the highway is quite disturbing to about 412 homeowners who can be expropriated if that plan goes through. So I would like us to investigate further. If we could actually get the ministry to consider moving that environmental assessment sooner than the five-year window that they're now predicting. It really has... It really has a very drastic effect on the homeowners, but also on the economic development of that area. So it's something that I have not had a chance to talk to staff here, or, and minimally at the Town of Blue Mountains, but maybe we could investigate that as a possible delegation.
Is the Town of Blue Mountains planning to seek a delegation on, on that as well?
As I said, Mr. Warden, I haven't really had a chance to talk to our staff here or at the Town of Blue Mountains, but I do think it's something that maybe staff here want to consider talking with our local staff about. I think it's a significant issue for all of us. It is Highway 26. It is the main corridor, east-west corridor, and I, I don't expect the ministry has, is flush with the kind of money that would make that widening happening, but the fact that they don't do the environmental assessment now is keeping a lot of people in a hostage situation right now.
So through you, Mr. Warden, I'll suggest that Pat, you talk to Russ and Sean and, and see where we want to get, and then we can speak to this again on January 10th.
Sounds good. Anything else? Let me ask if there's any, any other, other business. And I'll turn things over to you, Kim.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Council, in considering the, the items that we as staff felt were important to bring forward to you early in the agenda, certainly long-term care has been something that's, you know, been top of mind for everyone. And in preparation for any future discussions or directions around long-term care, we thought it would be important to provide an opportunity for all of council to really have the opportunity in an environment where you felt comfortable in, in learning and sharing information, to just go through the chronology of reports and decisions that have been made around long-term care over the past number of years. So what we're proposing is that on January 22nd, we would hold a workshop, a staff learning day, if you will, an education and training session, where we'll bring in an outside facilitator, just someone to walk through all of the information that has been in the public realm around long-term care for the last number of years. So everybody has the same opportunity to hear, this is the information that was presented at the time, this is the decision that was made at the time. Because this is an education and training session, we will only be able to cover information that has already previously been in a public space. This is not a time for debate, not a time for, you know, moving the agenda of council forward, but it is an opportunity to learn and discuss and ask questions of clarification. So I'm really hopeful that that, that date will work for all of you. We'll send out an invitation. If anybody, you know, is aware of something that's really significant, then we can have a look at that, and I think.
Counselor Brown?
Mr. Warden, Madam T.O., will we have this early in the morning? Nine?
That was our, yeah, we were looking as Heather says, at between 10 to 2, but we can adjust and make it a little bit earlier if that helps. Okay, so we'll try and get things moved up. It's okay?
We, we have commitments as well at the Blue Mountains at one, so the earlier the better.
Okay, perhaps this can be a breakfast meeting. If I, if I, if I, no, not 7:30, but.
We'll try for nine.
Yeah, we'll look at 8:30 or 9 o'clock, and we'll make sure there's breakfast on the table for you. Okay, so it does, is everyone just generally okay with that idea? So we will, this session, we'll make sure that the agenda and the, and the information to be covered off is published ahead of time, but because this is an education and training session, when we come together, there will be a, a resolution to move into closed session so that we can then move through the information. All right? And then from that, I'm assuming that as a result of those discussions and the learning that happens that day, that may inform future notices of motion or future direction to staff, but that will happen at another time in, in committee of the whole. Okay?
Very good. I think that's it for other business. Turning to item number seven, any notices of motion? Counselor McQueen?
CEO, with regards to your information, I have two notice motions. First one is that Gray County Council moved forward with rescinding the motion to sell Gray Gables long-term care home in Markdale, further withdrawing the application to the Ministry of Health and Long-Term Care, of moving 66 long-term care beds from Gray Gables to Rockwood Terrace development. My second notice of motion, that Gray County Council apply for a minimum of 60 beds to the Ministry of, of Health and Long-Term Care for the redevelopment of Rockwood Terrace, allowing for five modulators of 32 totaling a hundred, a minimum of 160-bed facility. And furthermore, applying for a minimum of 30 new long-term ca, care beds to the Ministry of Health and Long-Term Care for Gray Gables, making it a minimum of a modular, or modulators of 32, allowing the facility of a 96 long-term care bed facility, and moving forward to expanding its fourth wing. Just with the information that was presented here today from the CIO, I would move that this be forward to the January 24th council meeting.
Thank you. Any further notices of motion? Lovely. We're near the end. So we have, Jody, do you have anything to say about the, the technology and security training?
Yeah, I was going to say a purple hour.
Okay, so we will start that right now. Now, yeah, after we adjourn, yes. We will, where are we going to have it, like, right here? Okay, so maybe we can take a short, like, very short break. Lunch is?
Lunch is actually downstairs today in the staff room. We're having a, a council staff lunch, which is something that we are starting this year, or trying this year, and it's a, it's a way for you to get to know the staff in this building and for the staff to get to know you. It's a full Christmas dinner, so please go down and, and chat with our staff.
Okay, and that will be approximately in one hour.
Yes.
Right? So I will call for a, yeah, sorry, a motion to adjourn. I was going to look over to Burley. And a second, okay, thank you, Bart Nicky.